For the Olympus Hercules well pad and interconnect. For those of you who are back, welcome back. For those of you who are new, welcome. So, just a reminder to all, this is a legal proceeding. So, it is being reported and a record is being transcribed. So, we would ask that you kindly have no outbursts. Please keep ordered. Obviously, if you get out of line or there is disorder, I will gavel you and warn you and if the conduct continues, you will be removed. We have police officers here if necessary. So, please just keep order. Again, this is a legal proceeding, so we're trying to curate a record. So, it's important that we don't have outbursts or booing or cheering because, as you can see, the court reporter has to take all this down. Notice to all, we are not going to get through. This hearing will not be concluded tonight. The next hearing will be continued. It will be held on Tuesday, September 20th at 6:00 PM. Okay, so that's Tuesday, that is just upcoming Tuesday at 6:00 PM. So, this evening, what we're anticipating is that Olympus will likely get through most of their witnesses. I'm not sure that they'll even get through all of their witnesses along with the cross-examination of those witnesses. So, there will be no, we won't get the public comment once again, I expect. Hopefully, we'll get there at the next hearing, at the continued hearing. Just announcement for those on Zoom. If you're participating via Zoom and you would like to have a public comment, we would ask you at the outset, prior to our start at 6:00, please go into the chat where the comments, put your name and your address and state that you would like a public comment. That way, it's similar to the procedure we have for the signup sheets in the back of the rooms. We would ask that you do that if you would like to speak prior to the start of the hearing. That way, we have the record, we know who's going to speak, and it's all documented and on there. So, if there's no questions from the commissioners, we will continue. Mr. Lucas, with I think your witness, Mr. Taylor.
Before we continue, I've got a couple objections I'd like to put on the table, please.
Okay.
Scott Taylor, the county of Elizabeth Township. One, right off the bat, is the objection to this continuous timeframe of September 20th. The objective, we're not given an opportunity to be privileged to add information on when this is going to be scheduled. We have expert witnesses that we have laying in wait to attend one of these because anything coming up, we need to schedule their time in. They're not just sitting out there waiting for Olympus to say, "Okay, come on in." We need time to schedule this. One week is not enough time to schedule this.
How are you going to?
Not even a week. The main objection we've got tonight is the acceptance of the binders that were presented to council roughly 40 minutes into the hearing. Christopher Lucas noted that the binders replaced the original copies previously submitted. All of the objectors and the status, and with party status, should have had opportunity to review these binders prior to being admitted into the record. We were not given that opportunity. We don't know if anything changed in there. We do know, because I'm the only one that actually received the copy of these binders through emails from the last week trying to get them. I received a copy of it yesterday. There's a page difference, so there is something different in those books. Only yesterday, as I mentioned, September 14th, I did receive a copy of these binders. I'm the only objector that received this that I'm aware of. The rest of the objectors had the opportunity to see that binder as well before it's put into evidence. For the same reason, we're also objecting to the remainder of the exhibits that admitted, there were several maps that they turned in to you guys and all the stuff from the air quality expert as well. We never got a chance to review any of the.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Are you objecting in that the exhibits that have been admitted, just so I understand your objection, the binders that were submitted as exhibits do not match up with the application? Is that your objection?
Yes.
I don't know. We never got a chance to review it.
Well, I'm not asking you if it is or it isn't. I'm asking, is that your objection?
Yes.
That you don't know whether it matches up?
Absolutely.
So, it would be my, I mean, I'll let Mr. Lucas speak, but just so that you're aware, because I think you brought this up at the township meeting as well, and I was trying to understand what your objection was. I mean, my understanding is they're not bound by the application itself. If they want to submit additional evidence, it's just like the expert testimony, they're allowed to submit additional things. The application itself, when it's submitted, it has to comply with the ordinance in terms of what's in there. So, if it's 10 things, it has to have each one of those. If it does have each one of those, it will be deemed administratively complete. Then it'll move on, go to planning, get scheduled for hearing. So, that process is part of the application. But when you're having a public hearing, they are allowed, as, I mean, I'll let Mr. Lucas speak, that's just my understanding of the law. So, I would be the same for you. Like, you're not bound by anything either. If you want to submit relevant evidence, relevant testimony, you know, we haven't seen your expert CV or anything like that, but you're not going to be precluded, of course. Sorry, you are? You're not going to be precluded from submitting that evidence. But I'll let Mr. Lucas respond to both of those if you want.
Yeah, I mean, I concur with your summary of what the appropriate procedure is here. There were certain things that Olympus was required, substantial volume of things that Olympus was required to include with its application, which it did. It was now re-administratively complete. And as in any land use hearing, you start with the application and then the parties submit additional documents, additional testimony. So, this is completely consistent with my experience in many decades of doing land use proceedings. The one thing I would say, exhibits A and B were, A was the application for the well pad. Exhibit B was the application for the interconnect pipeline. Olympus submitted 17 copies of those to the township when this was filed, along with electronic version. In the interest of saving paper, we only made one official set for the record. There's no substantive difference. The only thing that's different is that we added tab numbers and the index at the front represented to the township and the board. There's not one change in the word in terms of any substantive materials in those, from what was originally submitted. And again, this is for ease of saving on paper. That's why we provided one more set. But that document has subsequently been available for several months.
Yeah, I mean, anything to add to that? I mean, I've done these hearings as well, many of these, and that's my understanding is that it doesn't have to, although he's saying that it does match up. But I can, I'm going to overrule your objection at this time. If you can come forward and renew your objection with some, something substantive that's incorrect or not, you know, whatever you're going to object to, I'd be more than happy to consider it at that time.
I would very much like an objection to be left open until we have due time to actually review this. That's great. Mr. Lucas says it's the same. Okay, you already had it, so why did he bring another one? That's question number one. If it's the same exact thing that you already had for the last three months, why do we have another?
You brought one. Yeah, I don't want to answer. I, I'm thinking he brought one for the hearing itself. In case one of these guys has a question, we could pass it around and look at whatever that it is. There needed to be a copy here, I assume, for that purpose, but.
Right, and to have one official copy for the record.
Yeah, this is going to go with him, with the.
Court reporter, excuse me.
Okay. And then anytime anything is submitted as part of the record, do the objectors not have an opportunity to sit to review that and possibly object to it?
Sure.
We have not had that opportunity with those binders.
Well, you have, I know you've been given the information.
It was less than 24 hours ago, Matt.
Okay, certainly.
I appreciate that Mr. Lucas says it's the same. Sorry, I know, just right off the top, both of the binders have a page difference.
I appreciate it, yeah. I'm going to overrule you for now, but if you have something that you find, then let me know.
All right, and what about the timeframe and the scheduling this day next week?
You need to tell me, I mean, I'm sure that we could all work on a date that's reasonable, that is beyond the next hearing date. I assume if you're, if you absolutely cannot get your expert here for that date, I think that's something we can circle up with after tonight. I don't want to do it right here in public. We have other things that we need to get to, so if we can circle up.
Why can't we do it here in public? You do it behind your.
Because I need to look at, I need to look in my calendar. I need to see what I have available. I'd have to talk to these guys. I literally just went around and asked these guys if September 20th worked. So, it's not like there's planning going on here in advance.
We've got all the objectors that are subject to your decision. Why weren't we included in those, in that conversation?
In terms of what, September 20th?
The date, yes.
I, I don't know, Scott. Are you not available on September the 20th?
I don't, I don't know if my expert witnesses are.
We'll come on in with your case in chief whenever we convene this hearing, okay? Tonight?
Okay.
Thanks.
Excuse me, Matt, I have a concern as well. Joel Whitman? Do you need my address?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I also just want to go off of what Scott had said. I am an objector. I did not receive those documents at all. I understand Scott got a link. Did any other objector in this audience get the link besides Scott?
I believe you did.
No, I didn't. I am waiting on it to show you.
If anyone has party status, and I said this to Scott after the meeting, if anybody has party status, the township has the electronic copy of the documents that we'd gladly make available for these documents.
So, my question is, I personally, as a party status objector, I did not request Dr. Long's presentation credentials for any of those documents. Yet, I had Elizabeth Township send those to me via email, but they couldn't send me that. And my concern is, I didn't have time to review that. And based on what Scott just said, there's a page difference. So, it's not the same application. It's not.
It doesn't need to be the same application because I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I want the opportunity to verify that it's the same. I understand that you can tell me something, Mr. Lucas can tell me something. I want to be able to see it myself.
Mr. Lucas, go ahead. Do you have a response before I?
No.
I have my, my, what I would be willing to do, what I will do is I will hold the admission into abeyance until the next hearing. If you guys find something that's objectionable, we can deal with it at that time. But, you know, they'll be conditionally here submitted and I'll formally admit them once you guys, when you guys can respond at the next meeting. Is that a point for you?
I appreciate that. Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Lucas, any objection to that?
No.
Okay.
And Greg, can you make sure that we get all of those?
Yeah, I just.
If anybody who has party status would like a copy of, sorry, Kim, I was talking over there. I apologize. Yeah, we have to talk one at a time. If anybody who is a party would like copies of the documents, please submit a request to Mr. Butler. We have them electronically and we can email them to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to add, maybe you guys could consider ending like five minutes early so you can decide on a new date instead of having to do a whole bunch of different things as well here.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be candid with you. The difficulty is missing on my schedule because I'm at meetings pretty much every night. So, it's very hard for me to move things around. I can't, I have to call, move other municipal meetings around. So, it's just harder on me, so I'm trying, we're doing the best we can.
I know, I understand. We, we all have families and jobs, and this isn't our main job. So, we get it. I'm just asking you guys, five days is not enough time for us. Thank you.
February 16, 45, Cedar Drive. I'd like to give a heads up to be back on both of those. The fact that I had, I'm sorry, I'm going to try to be a part of it. I promise. I had party status for Apollo B. I had party status for Plummets. I was given a binder and asked at that point in time, is everything in the binder look acceptable to you? And I had to make the decision to say yes or no. And I had that binder the rest of the time. I did not get that as a party status.
Yeah, Mr. Grace, I don't want to cut you short, but if it's the renewing the same objection, I've already dealt with it. You'll get, if you want a copy, email Mr. Butler. I will certainly provide you the copy. It has, I'm holding the admission on hold until you have an opportunity to address it, okay?
I understand that. My point is that I, just like I received the four documents that were there, five documents, I guess, two maps, and then the Chris Long study and all the other things that was there. I got that from Jess and you were sending me that. I got that on Friday. That was the, what their presentation was. I didn't have to file a write to know. I didn't have to ask Craig Butler.
I'm not asking anybody who has party status to file a write to know. All I'm saying is if you want it, email Mr. Butler and you will get it.
I just think it should be a natural setting. I'm just saying it's actually a natural process. I also have a concern about the order of operations that was done in the fact that they knew based upon their presentation with Dr. Long and how long his slides were and how long the examination was going to go, that that meeting was not going to be done in one night. That this meeting, that this hearing could condition a news meeting as soon as they brought him as a witness, had the.
Mr. Grace, I just want to cut you short. We had advertised for two meetings already. These two were already previously advertised. I had hoped that we would get further along than we did. It was hopeful that we would get them done too. That doesn't always happen.
What I'm saying is they knew that they could get it done in two as soon as they put that there. So, my point would be if we started the Ryan Daley and the rest of the conversation early, we could have said, okay, next week we're bringing in this air quality person and we could have had the data and so forth. I'm also concerned about the fact that we had Thursday, Thursday, and then Tuesday is a very, very tight turnaround to be able to do all of this. And that's not done in other municipalities anywhere. And I understand everyone here has something. But that doesn't mean that this has to be done in the month of September. That's not how this works. So, that's, that's my concern is the fact that as soon as the presentation was given, it automatically kicked it to a second date. And now we're kicking it to a third date. And we didn't have any intelligent questions to come up with because we had no idea what was coming. That's my objection.
I'm going to overrule your testimony. Mr. Lucas?
I did this one protocol issue I would point out. Except we had additional exhibits last, last week, other than the binders. We did handout, had available some additional hard copies that I know some of the divisions that we have. And we'll do the same tonight if there's anything else. So, where we stand now is resuming cross-examination of Mr. Daley. So, we present it for that purpose.
Okay. You have to reserve a minute or is he at that? Okay. Do you want to stand there? Okay. Mr. Gray, your witness.
Good.
Start with your question. Okay, you can take the mic out if you want.
I guess my first question is probably not directed to you, so I'll try to go ahead and move on to my next one. You wrote the narrative that is in the application because that progress of the CEC posted on the Hollywood page. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The narrative you wrote included information about applications for well permits. In item number four in the old setup, how it was, it was listed as well plats. And it was not listed, nor was it the complete application for the wells. So, the well plats themselves are not a complete application, is that correct?
And you're talking the well plats being the full application to the DEP?
Yes, because it states, yes.
That's correct. There's additional information that goes with the DEP supplemental.
Beyond the well plats, there's additional.
Correct.
Okay. Not only did previous wells of yours have not only those applications, they also included ones that were approved. And I guess my questions are done it in that why were the permit applications not submitted for this application and only the well plats were submitted?
So, the well, the well, the drill permits were submitted to DEP via their online electronic permit system. As we were preparing the application, we were not able to download the electronic permit forms. So, the information we submitted with this application included the well plats, which are the substantial part of the application. And we had that information because we uploaded those documents to the e-permitting website. So, we were able to submit those with the application. Since that time, we were able to access the full e-permit applications.
So, you did not have, at the time that this was submitted, you did not have any copy of the applications you sent on initialized out of your background?
Uh, correct.
Okay, because in the narrative, it says the joint permit, drill permit applications as submitted to the PDEP are provided with this application. That is in your narrative in exhibit three referenced on page three. So, it says that with this application, what is included is all of that information. That is your narrative.
Okay.
Can someone verify that, that it's there?
Can you read that back in, this question?
So, a question, because in the narrative, it says the joint permit, drill permit applications as submitted to the PDEP are provided with this application. That is in your narrative in exhibit three referenced on page three. So, it says with this application, what is included is all that information.
Mr. Taylor, you understand the question?
Uh, yes.
Okay. We, we're, we don't answer questions. You have the specific questions for Mr. Daley.
He was looking to say, "I guess so." And I was just saying that that's a reference of the binder. You can look at it either with that binder perhaps.
You have to, right.
So, you're, you're going to accept that that is in your narrative? That is, is right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'm good. Next one. On page three of the narrative, bullet point number three. It says the applicant shall provide logs or other documentation estimating the deepest fresh groundwater. Your response is information collected during pre-drill sampling water wells within 3,000 feet of the well site will be submitted. My question is, what happens to this information gathered? Who ends up with it in the end?
You're talking about who we submit the information to?
Who all receives that information?
Uh, so my understanding is we would submit that information to the township.
No other authority besides the township?
Uh, not that of ours.
Um, what would happen if it's determined that there's a freshwater location lower than what had been anticipated? And so, in the drilling process, you might go through that. What would happen then?
So, I think another witness can answer that question.
Do you have any data of the pre-drill water sampling at this point in time?
Uh, not that of ours for the site.
Okay. Your project narrative, again on page three, it's very big page. The last bullet point says the proposed wells be drilled to estimate depth ranging from 7,961 feet to 7,986 feet. And then it talks about pressures. And it talks about the fact that there will be multiple valves, including an ESD valve, which is operated in pneumatic way or electrically and can be shut off remotely. The question is, what happens during the drilling phase before any of these safety valves are put in?
Uh, again, I'm not the correct witness to answer that question.
Okay, who, who would be the correct?
Uh, one of Olympus' representatives. Uh, one of Olympus' representatives.
All right, the next question is about emergency plans. That's probably not you either. I'm just getting through your narrative that you mentioned these. And I thought you had informational background because it's all in your, you're writing.
The narrative is a compilation of all the team put together when we submit the application.
So, you, again, another Olympus team member later to answer questions about that?
Yes.
What is marked as exhibit C because it came to me as a C200 and entered in the 9/8 meeting? Was that exhibit given to planning and submitted with the application made third? Or did they have any access to that drawing when they were making the decision to plan?
You said the C200 drawing?
C200 from last week.
Yes, so we presented that exhibit to the planning commission. And that's simply a compilation of the two designs for both the well pad and the interconnect combined on a single exhibit.
So, the planning had that information? And it would have been in the initial application?
I don't recall if it was in the initial application, but the exhibit was presented at the planning commission meeting.
That exhibit itself was, was presented to the planning commission?
I could be to answer that question.
No, what, what I'm asking is, there's a difference between it's provided to them and the binder filled with everything else. And it was presented like you presented it, that said, here is something that we have. My question is, was it presented as a standalone? Or was it presented in a binder? That's what my question was.
I believe it was protected on the wall.
Let the witness, I mean, let the witness, yeah, let the witness answer. No doubt, Mr. Daley.
I do not recall if it was included in the original application. However, was projected on the screen for the planning commission meeting.
Okay. Do you know anything based upon the map that that C200 gave us? Did you, you put the information together, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, do you know what part on 51, the Lombardo property is compared to how far past Roundo Road Extension it is? How far from Burn Lane? How far from like Sylvester and Cleveland's, that kind of area? Do you know where specifically this is located? The Lombardo driveway?
Yes.
Would you give me some red frame of reference?
It's between Roundo Extension and Burn Lane. I do not have the exact distances in front of me.
Going to exhibit 12. And I'm sorry, I mean, I don't know how this is going to go later on with the new binder and somebody's trying to reference this. I'm referencing the original application because that's what I have. So, I don't know how that ties to that. But on page, on.
If you're, can I give you a suggestion?
Yeah.
If you're going to cross-examine future witnesses, if you make a copy and say, "Here's the exhibit." We can enter that in and then, you know, it would be less confusing than trying to pull it just, just a tick. If you want ticks, it's up to you, but.
I can do that. I reference a lot of places there and there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, well, I know what you're saying because you're saying.
Until Tuesday to get this done.
Well, you're saying exhibit 12 and it's, you know, I think they're able to mind it. But I'm just giving you a suggestion. Go ahead.
Right, okay. So, on that exhibit 12, your map, when you did project this last meeting, said the truck route is take 51 north, go down 51 and turn right. Is that correct?
Uh, I don't believe that's exactly correct.
In the key at the bottom, that's exactly what it says.
So, are you referring to the home route coming north from I-70 or the one?
Yes.
Okay. So, I, I guess you do repeat the question?
It says go down 51 north and turn right. Is that what it says?
So, yes, they would head north on Route 51 and make a right into the access road.
And the access road is their present driveway? That's going to be expanded?
Correct.
Uh, is there any way to show that map? That was there from last week?
We'll pull it up again.
Yeah, can you hit those links?
That's good.
Hit one for you. Agent's got you nothing to use, so I'm necessarily out there. So, I'm referencing the C200.
Do we need to wait for the screenshot?
Yes, specifically. Yeah, specifically the C-200, um, the other, the combination that we're missing. Alright, so 51 is the lanes that are down there.
Correct.
And their driveway comes off at, at Annel. So when I say it's like a 90-degree turn, it's more like an 85 or 80-degree turn, that you're turning back on yourself, back up there. So you're coming down the road and turning back to make it into that area, is that what that showed?
Yes, it, it's very close to 90 degrees, maybe just a, a hair less than 90 degrees, that's what I'm getting at.
Right, and there's also, as you see, bends that are going around there, and the topography of that area is heavily voided everywhere. And so, traffic that is coming 51 north into that area, and a truck is trying to go ahead and slow down to make that turn, would be coming around a bend, going down a hill, because 51 is downhill at that point in time, past areas that trees are obstructing that area, into the well site that's at 85 degrees. Have you looked at that map to show?
Uh, this map does not show the existing trees you're referring to.
But the 85 degrees is being shown on that?
Not exactly 85 degrees, but I, I understand.
Okay.
Yes.
Has there been a traffic study at this location? To determine the impact on drivers on 51? How many drivers pass that location per minute, per hour? Um, how, adding truck traffic to that, making that turn, how is that going to affect people traveling 51? Has there been a traffic?
Uh, to my knowledge, there's not been a traffic study conducted by Olympus. However, it is my understanding that, based on PennDOT's requirement, uh, since it's a state road, that a traffic study would not be required, uh, for this site.
Okay, uh, but now we're getting to the fact that on the left side of 51, we have Forward Township, and on the right side of 51, we have Elizabeth Township, and 51 makes up Elizabeth Forward School District. If that's a true statement, correct?
I do not know what the school district boundary is. Um, the township boundary, you are correct, well, is the roughly the center line of state around 51.
So this would have an impact for people in the township? It's not just the fact that it is a state road, it's the fact that this does have an impact on township revenue. And people who are trying to travel Pittsburgh, and people who are trying to travel in towards Uniontown. They would be impacted by this, is that correct?
I mean, ob, obviously, the trucks would utilize Route 51, uh, just like every other, uh, business or operation along Route 51.
Right, my contention would be, other businesses do not have an 85 degree into their location, and they do not have sand trucks and water trucks and so forth. That would be my point of contention. Um, is it your professional opinion that a truck coming at highway speeds would have enough turn radius to enter that location?
A vehicle would have to slow down to make the turn into the site.
Did you calculate how slowly they would have to turn?
Uh, no, we did not.
Do you have an estimate of how slow they'd have to be going to save them in the end?
I would say similar speed as they would for any turn.
Okay. If another truck were having to leave that area at the same time a truck was entering that area, and going back to the topography and the downhill and the curves, I'm sorry, and the trees, could there not be a situation where trucks that are exiting and trucks that are entering will be at the same place at the same time?
When you say same place at the same time, what are the words?
Like, someone coming out of the well site and someone else entering the well site could be entering and exiting roughly the same location, that they don't see each other entering and exiting, but it's close enough that they will, by the time both trucks try to make the maneuvers, there would be immediate danger locations. Is that possible?
So, you're referring to build the site distance if a truck is sitting up on the access road, getting ready to turn right to leave the site?
No, I'm saying they're about to enter that access road. They're higher, towards their gate station, quicker dodge at your gate station. They're coming now, go towards the road. Go towards the 51. That's how they're going. Now go from down 51 and enter the site. That's how they're going. So the person who is up towards the gate is going to exit and not know anything that's going on this channel. And the person coming down is going to be entering and not knowing the whereabouts of the truck on the other side. And that there is a possibility that both of those trucks would enter that same location at the same time. Is that a possibility?
So, the access road is proposed at 24 feet wide, which is wide enough for two trucks to pass in opposite directions. Um, additionally, any truck, uh, coming out the access road would be required to stop at the bottom of it?
I'm, again, go from up by the gate stations, they're coming down, so they'll be required to stop down there, and they're about to be hitting their brakes. But they have yet to come into the line of sight of the person entering, is what I'm saying. So they, it's not that they are stopped there and waiting to turn, it is that they are coming down to exit, and at the same time, someone is coming in to enter.
Is, is there a question?
Yes, the question is, is it possible that two trucks can meet at the same place at the same time? That's the question.
Again, I, I believe my answer is, the, the access road is wide enough that trucks could pass.
He's not asking about that. I think what he's asking is, there a sightline issue up the road? Not at the access point of 51, is there a sightline problem or issue with the truck coming off 51 and heading up, and a truck possibly coming off of the pad up in there?
So, I would agree that there, that a truck there would not be able to walk south, um, through this hillside to see a truck there.
That's what I'm asking.
However, that, that's not an uncommon situation, uh, but I also don't think that that would cause a safety issue for trucks entering or actually in the site.
Looking again at that map, well, the statement that I say is gonna be hearsay in other cases and whatever else, I understand. So, I won't get a part with it. But the question before in Ross Draper was the fact that you guys like to have this circle, uh, circle things, and no one is coming in both directions, and you're clear pathways to do that. If I follow that road up further, how will a truck that is entering the well pad and a truck that is leaving the well pad make this swoop turn to be able to do that?
Are you referring to the turn, uh, right before you enter the well pad?
Yes, that up there. How is that, like you like in other locations? You like to have this ability for them to not be coming in at the same location, but have a radius of curve, of a, a circle that they can clearly see each other through the full maneuver. It does not seem that up there, there is also going to be another issue, my other point of contention.
So again, the, the access road is wide enough, and we have run, uh, truck turning templates on this access road design to verify that trucks can pass each other in opposite directions around, uh, all the turns on this site.
How does that truck turn around on the car?
Uh, you're referring to when it enters the pad site?
Yep.
Uh, again, the pad is, um, roughly 340 feet wide by 500 feet long, uh, which is larger than a football field. Um, so when the trucks enter the site, um, they can circle around the operations to, to head back out.
That may be true until you start putting wells on the site, and start building out the site, and start having other things at that site. And so your entire football field maneuvering becomes a little bit harder, because there are traffic stops along the way, of different wells, different operations, different things like that. As soon as this builds out, and you have, what is it, six wells? I can't remember, is it six wells that's standing on this thing?
Yes.
As soon as you start to build out, well, uh, weren't five wells, you have now built up some of your turning radius, is what I'm saying.
Again, this, this is more the line of testimony, certainly.
I'm, I'm just asking how you make the decision.
I understand that. I'm trying, I'm giving Leeley way, just try and keep it, the, the questions of the witness. I understand what you're saying. I think the more concise question would be, do you think once operations begin, the trucks are gonna have more difficulty because of the other items on the pad?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I think...
Can you answer that question for me?
Do you keep it concise?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep it concise, or, I'm trying.
Uh, so one of the things Olympus considers when they're, uh, determining where to put their wells and where they could put, um, other equipment on the pad, they keep in mind that truck, uh, circulation plan. So they, they plan for that as they're laying out their facilities on the pad.
Is there a map of that, and how this goes out, is that somewhere?
Yes, I believe there was exhibit submitted with the application.
Where all the wells are, where?
Correct.
Do you want the light set?
Yeah, I can't believe that. Uh, how many trucks, thank you? How many tr, okay, how many trucks would you consider entering this site, Daley? And I, and can you break it down for, like, during construction, during drilling, during completion?
Well, another witness could address that issue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and it, and probably that other witness would also answer the next question. If it had to have water trucks, how would that number change as another witness as well? The other way, the other map that you have the size of, now that's your maps. You have one that's on coming 51 north, and you have the other one that's coming 51 south. And you're having them go up the road. And you have them going on 136 and making a loop. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's one of the turnarounds.
Okay. The Harrah pad that is being considered in Ross Draper has a pattern that has them looping 136 as well to go the other direction. Is that correct? I'm again looking to see if trucks are entering that places, can there be a problem? That's why I'm asking this. I understand it's a different well site, but they have both of those wells, and they are in front of it. That's why I'm asking. So is it possible that the loops of 136 that are going on could have something prepared, these, and something prepared occur at the same time?
Uh, so, so I'm not aware of the scheduled operation between the, the two pads, but if the, the pads were, uh, active operation at the same time, I assume it would be possible.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure you can't answer water management plan questions, that's one that's correct.
Correct.
And I'm sure you can't answer sound study question. What about lighting sets? Is that someone else's?
Uh, I think it depends on the question. So you can ask the question?
Okay, thank you. Um, so there is a sound study that is submitted with this application?
Correct.
There is no lighting study that is submitted in this application?
That's correct.
And the ordinance does mention lighting, but did not?
Uh, I, I don't recall the exact ordinance wording for, for lighting.
Because Anna Paula Bean flew this, there was a lighting report that was given, and this is your same operations in the same township. And there is nothing that's considered in this location, I'm asking, why was there not a lighting plan for this one when it was used earlier?
Uh, again, I think as, as we testified previously, the lighting on the pads is a, a temporary condition. Uh, and again, those light plants would be pointed, uh, in order and downward of the pad. Uh, again, as we shared on the, some of the previous exhibits, uh, this well pad is located a significant distance away from nearest, uh, protective structures. So we, we would not anticipate that, that light pollution would be an issue from this site.
You would not anticipate it, but should you not have someone who officially looks at it to determine, is that a possibility? Is that a reasonable request?
Uh, I think that would be a determination from the township, if that was required.
Would you know anything about where the waste drilling is of this is going to be? Is that another question? I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm going through my list of questions, and I'm trying to see what he would be able to answer.
This is beyond scope, I mean, his direct question, I mean.
You can't see that, but you can... You think Mr. Gray saw Leeley, I think he's fishing for what is, what happens, you know?
Where, I don't want to miss the witness.
There's been a week delay since he testified, so I'm gonna give him a little bit of room, so go ahead.
Thank you. Um, does this application through the land development plan?
Uh, no, there's not.
Land development plans were issued with the others, with other sites that were there, is there?
No, there wasn't.
It's not used to answer.
You're gonna ask a question?
Well, if the, the question is, why is there not here, the, your inability to answer, I suppose.
Again, this is beyond scope, it's direct. And the fact that Mr. Gray said land development plans have not been submitted in conjunction with previous well pads in the township. And the, and the witness has answered that one wasn't submitted here, so...
Okay, um. How about the fact that that's in it, I do have, I do have, um... Actually, I don't have, I will give you testimony of, of the township's engineering company who reviewed the application that was presented, had a concern that there are three wells on the site, and what happens to those wells. That is in their response back to looking through the application. And so, do you have an answer? Does someone have an answer to that? Is that something?
I'm not sure what the question is.
The question is gonna be, how was the, um, township's engineering, K L H, questions answered based upon the questions that were brought forth and based upon your engineers?
So, we, we addressed those questions during the planning commission meeting. Um, and to answer your question now, um, as far as existing wells on the site, uh, that's all covered as part of the D E P's review, uh, what they call an area of review. Um, so that looks at all the wells, uh, the circle radius of the, the new Marcel's wells.
The circle radius?
Uh, circle radius, yeah, I'm sorry.
Going back to the Route 51, is there going to be truck stacking based upon where I showed that two trucks might leave each other? Would there be a possibility of truck stacking on 51?
Uh, again, the access road has been designed that, that trucks can make the, the turn into the site, so I would not anticipate there being any truck stacking back on 51.
Did you say stacking or backing?
Stacking.
Stacking, okay.
So, if some sort of staging has to occur as time goes on, you will just amend the plan at that point? Is that what would happen, or how does that work?
Again, our, our access road is over 3,000 feet long, um, which, that length, I wouldn't anticipate there being any truck stacking out on Route 51.
Again, I'm not worried about these guys. I'm worried about the very end of the location where that truck is coming out, and where the trucks are coming in, and a truck is saying, oh my gosh, I better wait for a minute to let this guy clear. And now, this truck on 51 has to stop, and there has to be some sort of a pause in stacking that truck on 51. I imagine with how long that is, there's not gonna be a chance. I'm not concerned about this stack. I'm concerned about 51.
Is there a question?
Yes.
Yes. The question was, if that occurs, would you amend the plan?
Again, I, I wouldn't anticipate that that would occur.
Someone else can answer questions without being here, can I? And talk about what's purposes and concerns.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm done with this gentleman.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Protect Elizabeth Township, you're a witness. All right, you can throw all the lights on, please.
I'll actually.
Oh, never mind. Just a reminder to all the other parties, please, you know, I'm trying to give everybody leeway as much as I can, but this is really, uh, cross-examination should be just questions, and that questions should be limited to the scope of what Mr. Daley has previously testified to. So if you can do your best, I, I would appreciate it, I would give you some leeway, but please try your best.
I'll, I'll try to get some stuff together. Who's the size of the pad again?
Uh, the, the dimensions are approximately 340 feet wide by 500 feet long.
We just threw a few questions here before we, so we've got to put one more on here. You're listed as project manager for Civil Engineering, it's all the same, you see, or is that correct?
Yes.
And that's for both of these projects currently proposed, the one with Sam, the, uh, Hyperion?
Correct.
As a project manager, are you the person responsible for compiling, verifying the accuracy and the information contained in both of these conditional use applications to the township?
Yes, in coordination with the rest of the Olympus team.
Okay. On May 3rd, uh, there were two separate applications, the letter to the township municipal building. One for Eric Lee's well pad and the other for the Hyperion Pipeline and Interconnect, correct?
Correct.
These applications have been replaced with what has been submitted on record at 9/15/22, when we started the hearing, correct?
Uh, I'm not sure as far as terminology of being replaced. Again, as far as the, the, the application that we submitted now has not changed.
Okay. All right, I, I believe it was Mr. Lucas's exact word, was, was this replaces the 17 copies that were drawn in that, uh, as we're stating that this is identical, so they say. Next question would be identical, which Mr. Lucas asked, answered earlier.
Mr. Taylor, one second.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. I forgot to ask Mr. Lucas if he wanted to redirect based on the cross. So at any point, Mr. Lucas, after any of these, if you want redirect. I, I was, but I wanted to give you the opportunity, just so that you know, if at any point you want redirect, just speak up. Otherwise, I'm gonna keep going down the list, but if you want, please speak up.
As I expected.
Uh, that's just to wait, yeah. I agree, I just wanted to let you know, you do have that option, so, okay, sorry, Mr. Gray.
Yeah, I, I do agree with Lucas here, after following a few people, some of my questions may be repetitive, and I apologize for that. Our wording might be a little bit different, but if we covered it, please pop in. To your knowledge, has anything changed in the material between the original application and that one?
Uh, no.
Okay, has the application been, uh, I apologize, I don't like it. Do the applications that we have here connect? May or do? By the DEP mirror each other 100% to your knowledge?
Uh, are you referring to the applications that were submitted with the conditional use application being saying that were submitted to the DEP?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Sure. Do the applications here and the applications being reviewed by the DEP, PADEP mirror each other 100%? Referring to the applications, the Eric Lee's well pad and six well application was submitted on behalf of Olympus Energy, correct?
Yes.
And some of this is probably just recapping what we did last week. Uh, the pipeline and interconnect application was on behalf of Hyperion Municipal, correct?
Correct.
This is a point to Ted brought up as well, uh, to help keep track of transcripts and recordings. Obviously, the public has not been given a copy of the original binders or the new one. So as we go through this, if there are any indications in that binder as to what section these things are in, tab number or something, I'm gonna be asking for that information, just for transfer purposes and reviewing later as we go through this information, where to find the information. Understood?
Okay.
In relation to these applications, are you the person responsible for reviewing the applicable municipal ordinances and making sure the proposed application meets the ordinance?
Uh, again, yes, in coordination with the, the full application team.
All right, so it's similar to what Ted asked, there's gonna be just a couple of points that maybe somebody else we can talk to later.
Correct.
Okay. The names of those people, I'm sure we'll get those as we go along. You describe in both of these applications, summarize. Both of these proposed installations will be used to collect natural gas and process as required for distribution to the marketplace, correct?
Uh, yes, I believe that's in reference to the interconnect.
Uh, I'm actually referring to both. Obviously, we have the well on one that's gonna bring the gas out of the ground, the pipeline to go between them and then all the equipment in between is processing the gas for market, right?
Correct.
Will there be equipment included on either of these sites to prepare for, uh, prepare gas for market? Uh, and to rephrase that question, there, obviously, you're not gonna bring the gas out of the ground, put it in a pipe and send it to market, right? There's gonna be processing equipment on both pads.
That's effective, is that the, the, the form of the question in terms of what you mean by processing equipment?
Mr. Taylor, do you want to clarify, or?
Yeah, I can give you a second to collect my thoughts on that.
Okay.
On both of these pads, you're gonna have different equipment. I think we mentioned in planning, uh, dehydrators, uh, metering, conditioning stations on the Hyperion platform to do different things as a gas to prep it for entering into the Eautran Pipeline, correct?
Yes.
Some of that equipment, maybe compressor stations?
Uh, not that aware of that. I think as, as far as the specifics of the equipment, uh, I think another representative from Olympus can discuss the details of that.
Perfect, uh, okay, so that'll be all the equipment, you know, I, I pick in waste processing, we can ask that of Hyperion, okay. Ted Gray's actually touched on this a little bit, CDC has prepared other conditional use applications that have been submitted to Elizabeth Township on behalf of Olympus Energy, correct?
Yes.
Can you recall how many?
Uh, I believe at least three for Apollo, um, one or two for the Pluto site, one for the Galene withdrawal.
All right, so with all that experience, it's, uh, reasonable, so you got a pretty good understanding of the township ordinances and what's required, right?
Yes.
You are aware that the Elizabeth Township ordinance for welling gas was revised in 2019, correct?
Yes.
To your, to your knowledge right now, do you believe these, both of these applications for the well pad and the interconnect pad adhere to all applicable municipal ordinances?
Uh, yes, so that's my knowledge.
To your knowledge, do representatives of Olympus or CDC meet with anyone from Elizabeth Township regarding this app, either of these applications prior to being submitted?
Uh, yes, we did have a pre-application meeting, uh, with township officials.
Do you recall when that was?
Uh, I do not recall the exact date.
Does March 1st sound familiar?
Again, I, I do not recall the date.
Were you part of those meetings?
Uh, yes, I was a part of the pre-application meeting.
Uh, do you know who on behalf of the township was part of that meeting? Zoning officer, township manager, township engineer?
Uh, I believe the zoning officer, uh, township manager, um, township solicitor, and I, I do not recall if the township engineer was, was in attendance.
Any of the commissioners by chance?
I do not recall the commissioners were in attendance.
Was this an in-person meeting or zone?
Uh, it was in person.
Do you know if minutes were taken?
Uh, that I do not know.
Okay, we're gonna jump to municipal notifications in this, we're gonna sit down for a minute, get this. Mr. Taylor, are you logged in to the Zoom meeting? I am not, I have not logged into the Zoom meeting. I apologize, um, I'll, I'll just point the camera towards the log. I honestly didn't think that far, I'm gonna drag, I apologize. First one we're gonna look at was municipal notice that was received, or actually dated 2/21, which I have copies of.
Do we have somewhat of an offer of proof where we're going with this because this doesn't appear to have anything to do with Mr. Daley's direct testimony?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, this has to do with complying to, with the ordinance and what information was submitted to the township and submitted to PADEP and when.
If you have something specific, I'd ask that you get to it, if you can't, instead of all of these, you know, we know was submitted. If you have something, please just ask the witness a question, if you believe the application was deficient in some way.
All right, well, if we, if we, there on the scale, of what, what ordinance requirement are we referring to?
Yeah, so I'm trying.
If I'm looking up here, it looked to me like these are, uh, notices that, uh, go to, uh, township due to the deregulation, which is not the subject matter of this hearing.
Hi, yeah, Mr. Taylor?
All right, all the information that is submitted to the PADEP is absolutely supposed to be, it, um, part of the application to the township, per your ordinance.
Mr. Lucas?
A response? Again, uh, objectors are free to, you know, make whatever arguments they want as part of their case. Uh, Mr. Daley can testify with respect to this issue on us direct, so we would object.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna overrule an objection at this time, but I, Mr. Taylor, again, if you have something specific, rather than going through each notice and saying, isn't this the notice and wasn't it submitted? Rather than going through that exercise, I would ask if you think there was something deficient, ask him directly, saying, the, the ordinance require this and you agree it wasn't submitted, that's the easiest way to get to the, get to where we gotta be, that's where you need to go. Okay, so please, just, I'm gonna give you some leeway, but let's get to where you're going.
Okay.
All right, um, again, referring to this, and this one is dated 3, or 2/21. 2/21, February, February 21st, 2022. Again, I have copies of these to add to the record. If we need to do that, uh.
They may already be part of the record, this is what this is, and, and these are mainly part of the record, but there are multiple submissions to DEP that were included in the application.
All right, so you guys believe that this is part of the application then? All right, uh, as the notice is on here, the project description describes the access road, 3,730 feet long. I'm gonna paraphrase just to keep things moving along here. Culverts, AMPs, which you did talk about, and the proposed well pad, infiltration basin and everything goes around the well pad, correct?
Yes.
All right, and this is in your cover letter to the DDP. Scroll down to this section here, which is actually the application to the DDP, correct?
Uh, that, I don't believe this is the actual application form, I believe this is a form that companies do.
Yeah, if you, if you scroll a couple more pages, I can confirm that.
Your general information form, which is gonna tell them who you are, what it's all about, and, correct?
Correct.
Scroll down to project description. And this is what was filled out to the DDP. Project involves the construction of a new permanent access road that will provide access to Eric Lee's well pad. Two permanent culverts, does not mention the well pad in this description. Do you know why?
Uh, so this application is the joint permanent application, uh, which is specific to straining floodway and wetland. Uh, so this application is the joint permit application, uh, which is specific to string floodway and wetland impacts. Uh, the access road, as described, is the only, uh, part of the project that will impact, uh, stream or floodway. Uh, the well pad itself will not have any impacts on streams or floodways of the site.
Then, okay, now come back to the cover letter, why is our cover letter talking about the well pad when it's not part of this application?
Maybe you could ask the witness what application is this referring to? And was it submitted as part of the application to the township? If that's, I put a drive in that, it'd be a lot shorter question.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Taylor, is that, is that the issue?
Okay, well, we know, we know the narrative page, the front end, and the application to the DDP have different wording. Could you show me in binder, or point me to where in that binder this is part of?
Uh, you're referring to the application form?
To Elizabeth Township, yes.
Uh, so it'll be in appendix A of the joint permit application?
For the record, the joint permit application was part of the application in the township exhibit A, tab 22.
Okay, well, at least I know where it's at in the binder, so I find it and I'll come up with. I'll try to confirm some of these questions for future questioning. Just so the audiences understand, can you explain what the municipal notifications are for and how they work?
Uh, simply to give notice to the township that an applicant is submitting application to the DDP.
Again, this is a state law requirement that is in relation to DDP, that nothing to do with the township.
Mr. Taylor, I thought you said you were gonna get into deficiencies in the application. Please, get there. Doing my best, but I mean, these are, these are state law, permitted, aren't really at play, so if you have a deficiency in the app, location as it was submitted, please ask your question.
I scrolled all the way to the end of this application to the DDP. There's a series of drawings in here, which, uh, I believe are erosion and sanitation control drawings, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Uh, the title block here, drawing notes draft.
Correct.
Which, in the engineering world, is an incomplete document, correct? It's not signed or stamped by a professional engineer and has to prove.
I, I agree, it's, it's not sealed by an engineer.
And this is what was submitted to the DDP, correct?
So, so these plans were submitted to accompany the joint permit application, uh, which again is specific to the string and wetland crossings that relates to, uh, chapter 105 of the PA code. Uh, a separate, uh, individual erosion and sanitation control permit was submitted to DDP. Uh, and in that permit application, uh, we did submit final sealed ENS plans, which should be reviewed against the state regulations.
Okay, so the, the application to the DDP is actually different than this.
No, what I'm saying is, what you have on the screen in front of you is what was accompanying the joint permit application. So there were multiple, uh, permit applications to the DDP. The permit application specific to erosion and sanitation control is not what's being presented right now. That application, uh, does include sealed, signed and sealed erosion and sanitation control plans.
Okay, and the signed sealed drawings are what was submitted to the township, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes?
I'm doing my best, sir. This is not a fishing expedition, if you have a question that you feel is relevant to a deficient application, please ask it. And just ask, keep asking the witness to verify documents that are part of the application, that's not gonna get us anywhere, okay? If you have something that you're, that is of concern, please raise it.
I apologize, I had a whole series of questions geared around these things and pointing out the differences between them. Paging through them. I guess the, the short question I'll ask is, all of these municipal notifications that we just looked at, there were five or six of them on that page. Are you saying some of them went to independent reviewers other than the DDP?
No, and, and to clarify, the notification forms, uh, that were submitted to the township, um, go to the, the township and the county. Um, and then proof of those receipt is submitted to the DDP with the final applications.
Yeah, this, this is a state law requirement, and the issue here could only be what was, and what was actually submitted with the application, not all these other submissions. So, this, if you want, this unnecessarily fragging this out, and we asked it, the, 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 uh, focus on questions that relate to Mr. Bailey's testimony.
And, and Mr. Bailey's testimony has everything to do with this application and the information that was supplied to the township. I am trying to go on a fishing expedition to find out if this information, which is public information posted on the township's website, matches what is, has been supplied to the township in the application.
Mr. Taylor, let me just, my response though, the, there is no need to go on a fishing expedition to see if the application's deficient. The ordinance lays out the criteria, they're either in there or they're not, okay? So my point is, you can't just keep going through pages submitted in the application and having them verify that, that's not the purpose of this hearing. If you feel that there's something deficient in the application, by all means, you have the floor, you have the witness. But just going through these notices and saying, this is what this is, or what is it, isn't advancing this hearing, and that's not the purpose of the hearing. So again, and it's outside this, frankly, it's outside the scope of this direct, and I'd let you go on it, but I'm, we need to get wherever you're going. I'm doing my best, honestly, to, to give this a leeway, but we can't just keep going down this road, it's now, you know, we'll be here for a, a year.
I appreciate that, Matt and Mr. Lucas, and in my review of the information that was put out in March, there are many deficiencies in this information, the public notifications, the municipal notifications that were received. I'm pointing out those differences because it does matter, when something is different between.
No, it doesn't, what, what matters is what was submitted with the application. What was submitted in draft form or preliminary form to the DDP, the DDP notice requirements has nothing to do with the ordinance requirements. And again, I agree with Mr. Lucas's request, if, if there's something in the application that you wanna hone in, fine. But this stuff, if, in comparing how this may match up exactly with what was eventually submitted to DDP and included in the application, is just completely irrelevant.
Okay, um, again, the simple question I'll put out, for all these municipal notifications, the six that are.
I mean, this, this is getting used to this point.
Mr. Taylor, is there, I'll let the.
Can I ask a question?
You have one question, let me ask a question and then I'll decide, but yeah, I mean, is it, we need to get to your deficiency, go ahead.
Is it your testimony that all of these municipal notices that went out are different than what is in these binders?
So, objection doesn't matter.
Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
Can you repeat that, please? All these municipal notifications, all these drawings, and, and actually, you did partially answer this already. All of this information, these drawings, and verbiage between whatever, between the cover letter and the check the box application portion, is different than what was submitted in these binders to the township.
So what we submitted in the binders to the township is the applications that were submitted to the DDP.
So what are the dates? What are the municipal notifications?
How about we stipulate to the fact that there are notices, that there are documents that were submitted that the township marked draft that were subsequently with DDP finalized? Is that what you're, is that your, what you're getting at? I think you're getting at, am I wrong?
It, it is kinda what I'm getting at, these, these are municipal notifications that are submitted to the DDP. The notice comes to the municipality to tell you what they're doing, and that information that we're looking at on the screen, they're telling us is not the same as what's in those binders.
Those applications are with DDP, we have our own application that has criteria. And so whatever DDP does, if DDP accepts a draft or not, we can't do anything about that. So, I, again, I was trying to, I think you were saying there were different documents submitted to DDP and to us. But again, in terms of your focus on DDP, that's outside our jurisdiction. We have an ordinance, it has application criteria, and if you feel that something's deficient there, please ask the witness to clarify.
Okay, um, Elizabeth Township ordinance, 14, move 3.36, oil and gas ordinance. The copy of the permit application submitted to the PATDP of permanent protections shall be submitted with the application for conditional use application. Correct? Hold, is that correct, say?
Yes.
And you're saying all of this information has been submitted to the township?
So the permits that were submitted to the DP that, that these notifications were in reference to, were included with the conditional use application. Uh, the only requirement, uh, DP has as far as notifications are concerned, is that we make those notifications and submit proof of notification to the township with the permit applications.
And this information that went to the DDP is different than what is in the application?
I, we will sustain that one already.
Sustained.
Uh, Elizabeth Township ordinance, chapter 27. Re-throw the chapter 27, 600, which details the zoning permits for R1 district. Uh, I have nothing, not even exactly. If we wanna enter this in, I'll leave that up to you, Mr. Lucas.
Are you still using the projector or do you want to connect now? Do you have work?
No, for the moment, I'm okay. So everybody agree this is a copy of our zoning ordinance? If we wanna add this in, hit the exhibit, turn it on.
We'll, we'll stipulate, yeah.
For the, just for the stenography purposes here, I'm gonna call it exhibit one P E T. Just so we can find it in transcripts. 606 B details allowable, uses allowable in the districts with conditional use approval, correct? What was the reference? 603B. Indicates a list of principal uses allowed in, uh, as a conditional use in an R1. I see 601B. 601B, I apologize for the type of my questions. 601B, that is correct. 601B1 is a list of, uh, principal uses allowed as a conditional use in R1, correct?
Yes.
In this list, there is, uh, oil and gas drilling is allowable as a conditional use according to 403.36, correct?
Yes.
601B2, as accessory uses, there are no allowable uses as a condition, is correct? Uh, that's what it says. Olympus and I, Perry and both submitted conditional use applications for the R1 district, correct?
Yes.
Yes, Olympus and High Period have both submitted conditional use applications for an R1 district. Are, either or both of these proposed activities going to be on the same parcel of property?
As I testified previously, there are multiple parcels, um, included with the applications.
Will either of these proposed uses be a principal use on the property?
Oh, object, that's a legal issue.
Would you mind explaining that a little bit, Matt?
In terms of what's got, why it's legal.
That is illegal.
So, yeah, because what is defined as a principal structure is a legal term, so, so that's not up to a witness to say it is or it isn't, it's a legal, it's a, there's a legal definition in whether something is or not is not determined by a witness, it's determined by the law, so he can't testify to this.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah, it does, thank you very much. Be a legal question as well. Has Olympus or High Period applied for a variance from the zoning hearing board? Or anything for the, in these two applications?
Uh, no.
Okay, ordinance 942, again, referencing to township ordinance, uh, to avoid entering exhibits, uh, if Mr. Lucas and the solicitor will be. If Mr. Lucas and the solicitor would be happy with that?
I didn't understand.
Ordinance 942, which is specific to oil and gas ordinances, I'm referring to municipal ordinances again, like Section 603. Just to avoid putting something in the record. Section 605, difficult to pull a cool, need to... The older operator proposed a gas well shall obtain a grading permit. I think we covered this. Mr. Bryce, you have not applied for a grading permit, correct?
Uh, no, I don't.
You know, Scott, do you have much more? Because I was going to take a break and some, I was going to wait till you were done. But if you have more to go, maybe now's a logical time.
I do have six more pages, so I'm going to take a break. I don't have too many time to collect my brain here.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Can break Butler, please refer to the table, please. Page of Mr. Butler, Mr. Gray.
He's eating a piece.
There he is. Thank you, sir.
Want a pizza?
You will not do.
Good. Okay, great. Okay, resume cross-examination. Mr. Taylor, your witness.
Thank you very much. Ordinance 1403.36H. Shall submit an emergency response plan, ERP, in a minimum to address, and there is a listed list of items covered in our ordinance, which I believe you did submit, your data, the well leakage, spill containment vandalism, defective casing and cementing, potential communication between well pad and public water supply, and control disposal plan, which I believe you did address in your application, correct?
Yeah.
Olympus did submit an emergency response plan with the application. As part of this plan, I want to see it, says, "Add a..."
I don't just find a question, Mr. Taylor, too hot, that's fine, we'll go back to emergency response plan.
Yeah, I'm going to sustain that objection. Mr. Taylor, you'll have an opportunity whenever you present your case, if you want to get into anything, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. As part of this plan...
Mr. Taylor, I just sustain the objection. That means you did not, you have to move on.
I can get off.
From the plan, from the plan.
Okay, 1403.36, property survey shall be submitted demonstrating the following information. Has that been done?
What, what information?
Can you refer to the information? Was there a property survey submitted as required by the ordinance, Section 1403.36B?
CDC did perform a property survey of the site, and that information was shown on the plant drawings and the well plats that were submitted with the application.
Okay, and if I recall, your project narratives for both of these refer to the C100 drawing?
Correct.
We'll put it up on the screen here. The lights back there somebody, please? All right, and this C100 is for the Hercules well pad, which is titled Overview Map, correct?
Uh, yes, correct.
That is not a property survey, correct?
It includes the property lines that were surveyed as part of our services.
Proposed locations for the well and wells, are they indicated on this map?
This is so self-obvious that we're just all...
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, honestly, I told you before, you can't just ask him if that what this is. You need to get to the point. I'm going to sustain the objection, move on.
Property survey is required by the ordinance. Is this a property survey? Or is this just a drawing indicating where stuff is at?
So in reference to this drawing specifically, again, it shows the property lines that were surveyed. The well plats that were submitted with the application do include the professional land surveyor's seal.
And was that submitted to the municipality in this application?
Yes.
Can you point to that? What drawing it is? Because it's starting off the C100 that you refer to.
So again, the official surveyor's seal is included on the well plats that go with the drill permits. The same property boundary lines that were on that plat are shown on the C100 drawing.
Okay, I will concede to the well plats showing property corner markers and lot lines. Relating to the well pad and the interconnect pads, the C100 drawings that are part of your, what was mentioned in your narratives for both projects, your narrative says that the C100 drawings are supplied as your survey.
Again, the property lines that are shown on the C100 drawings are the exact same property lines that were certified by the surveyor on the well plat drawings.
So why, again, being a surveyor, professional engineer, you know that the survey, the corner markers of all those properties should be indicated on a true survey, correct?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so I'll go back to the, I understand that the well plats are performed by, drawn by, done by a professional surveyor and stamped and sealed. Those are good for the well, the wells themselves. That does not include the well pad or the interconnect pad or the driveway access road, correct?
Mr. Taylor, question?
Yes, the ordinance requires property survey shall be submitted demonstrating the following. And the proposed location of the wells and wells, which you said we do have. It proposed, what is required by the ordinance, which should be part of the survey, shall include the proposed location of the well and wells, which your well plats do. The proposed gathering lines. Does this survey, do you have a survey that shows the gathering lines?
Uh, the C-100 drawing that was submitted, uh, with the pipeline interconnect conditionally use application includes the, the gathering pipeline.
Okay, the distance from existing structures.
Uh, yes, those are represented on the C-100 drawing.
Location of water supply wells.
Uh, yes, to the best of our knowledge, those are shown on the C-100 as well.
All right, and we're, again, referring back to the C-100 drawing, which does not carry a, uh, seal or signature of a registered surveyor, correct?
Uh, correct, it has a professional engineer's seal on it.
Which does not say, are you a professional surveyor?
Uh, I'm not.
All right, the information on this C-100, uh, where does this information come from? Because this looks like an aerial photograph with an overlay.
Uh, what specific information are you referring to?
Any of the information that we just talked about, the proposed gathering line location, distances to existing structures, uh, the property lines that are indicated on this, the C-100s. This C-100 drawing that CEC is calling it, uh, looks like an aerial photograph with an overlay.
That's correct.
All right, uh, where does this information come from? The aerial photograph and then the property lines that are indicated.
So the aerial image is obtained from Google Earth software, which is publicly available. The property line information, again, is shown, um, per the CEC survey that was performed under, uh, the direction of the licensor.
Uh, according to this drawing, the references, the property lines are ten from Allegheny County tax max, that parcel, correct?
Uh, that, that is what it says, uh, I would clarify that, that would be in reference to the tax parcels, um, beyond the limits of the project. Uh, so the, the three parcels that the project is located on, uh, have surveyed property lines.
Okay, so the property lines that are shown on this C-100, if we agree is not a survey.
Wait, no, I'll object to that.
Can you testify there, please?
I don't think the witness testified it wasn't a survey, all he said is wasn't, didn't have a surveyor's seal on it.
No, he said...
I thought you, I, I recollect the testimony being that this was the same line as what is in the seal that was, or the sealed version that submit, also was submitted with the application.
No, sir, you're misunderstanding, what is sealed by the surveyor are the, uh, well plats, specific, not the C-100. The C-100s are being represented as the survey to submit to the township.
You can ask him that.
Uh, I forget my question. So, uh, I believe my question was, what we're saying is this C-100 that were Olympus and CEC are calling the survey for the purposes of submitting to the township, have lot lines drawn on them that were achieved, uh, we're trying to find these things, the Allegheny County tax, these are tax maps, right?
So again, to clarify, the three parcels, uh, that the, that the project is located on, so that's the large Lombardo property and then the two Everly parcels, um, on the eastern side. Those three parcels, uh, were surveyed, the lines that are shown on this exhibit, uh, match the, the sealed survey drawing. And then the remainder of the parcels, um, around the perimeter of the, uh, exhibit, uh, are tax parcel lines.
Were those surveys of all those properties submitted to the township?
He's already testified to that.
No, he did not, he said the, the well plats were submitted to the township.
He did, he said the other ones were using the, the parts, the, uh, Allegheny County, uh, records. He said what he was.
Okay, I apologize for misattending.
Is that your testimony, sir?
Yes.
The three plots with the wells on were used and surveyed and had a seal, the others were using the Allegheny County parcel, like, parcel information, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll, I'll ask the question again, were those Allegheny County tax parcels?
This, this, this is getting abusive. It's not, okay, sustain, move on.
All right, you mentioned, uh, joint permit application, can you explain that a little bit better?
Uh, so a, a joint permit application, uh, is in reference to a permit that is reviewed by both the Pennsylvania DEP and the, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers, um, that's specific to impacts, uh, to streams, floodways or wetlands. Uh, specific to this project, uh, we do have two, uh, stream crossings along the access road, uh, that require submission of the joint permit application.
Okay, and is that for the access road only, or is that for other, our, our project? For the well pad and the interconnect as well?
Uh, as I mentioned previously, the, uh, the well pad is not located within, within any streams, wells or floodways. Uh, the access road specifically crosses, uh, two streams. Uh, no, uh, association with the, the interconnect facility, uh, is, is related to the joint permit.
Okay, so...
The joint permit application.
So with the DEP, the access road is one application and the well pad and wells, uh, the wells are separate applications, I understand. But the well pad itself is a separate application from the access road?
No, that, that is one application package. Uh, again, specific to the stream crossings, uh, the, the well pad itself does not have any, uh, impacts on streams or floodways.
Okay, thank you, that was kind of the clarification I was trying to give, if it was a joint between the access road and the well pad, or if it had something to do with the state.
The reference to joint is between DEP and US Army Corps.
Thank you for that clarification. On September 8th, you testified about coal removal. Um, I believe you mentioned the limits of the coal removal are gonna be at the end of the access road where it connects to Route 51, correct?
Uh, correct.
So, you're not envisioning encountering any coal with the well pad or anywhere of the access road at all?
That's correct. Well, I should clarify, the coal at the entrance is along the access road, but beyond that, we're not anticipating encountering additional coal.
Yes, I understood, thank you for the clarification. The well pad and the access road application to the DEP is for a, an EMS, simple EMS application? And the interconnect is, um, an application for ESCGP-3? Can you explain the difference between those, please?
Uh, so I think what you meant to refer to as an individual EMS press?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Which is different than simple. Uh, and, and individual permits actually, uh, requires additional review by DEP than, uh, the general permit, the ESCGP. Uh, and that's specific to, uh, having the, the coal removal on the access road.
Uh, and ESCGP? I apologize for sitting through all this. Um, and what's the difference with the ESCGP then with the interconnect pad?
Uh, simply because there's not, um, an additional, uh, permit and we're not anticipating encountering any sort of, um, coal or ash producing rock, uh, that project did not acquire an individual permit, um, so as far as erosion sedation control is concerned, that meets the requirements of the general permit.
As part of the ECE ESCGP-3 application, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the requirements with that application is to supply a compliance history?
Uh, okay, just, I, I, you know, Mr. Taylor, a little bit, he way to explain how the permitting system works. He's going to delve into what's in the ESCGP application. That is, again, that's a DEP issue, that's not one for consideration by his... Sustain, move on, Mr. Taylor.
It was a simple one, line, one question on that, on that regard.
You're getting into the DEP issue again, please.
No, I've been moving forward, sir.
That was, uh, will be at the end of my question.
Thank you. Sandra, your witness.
What's a typical, uh, depth of the, the well pads, about three and a half football fields, right hand or? How thick is that usually, the, the concrete?
Yeah, I would say, so the pad surface itself, uh, would be gravel. Um, so that's usually only like a foot, foot thick ground section. Um, somebody else can speak specific to, to concrete.
I know that it's concrete, so it's just gravel.
Just gravel, correct.
Again, while Mr. Taylor's cleaning up Kyle Walk, nice to see you tonight. I'm a little bit concerned about the, uh, entry off of 51 north into the access road. Uh, will there be a burn constructed there to allow for the trucks to slow down before they make the exact right hand turn off of 51? Uh, I'm specifically referring to tri, uh, tractor trailers. Tri axles and, um, and water trucks don't really concern me so much, but it takes a lot longer for, for a tractor trailer to slow down and make a 90 degree turn. Will there be a burn constructed there?
Uh, so, so you're, are you referring to a shoulder?
Correct, sure, I, I don't know the correct terms for it, but a slowdown area, we'll call it, so that they can move off of 51 and then turn in safely.
So, so there is no additional turning lane, uh, proposed, uh, again, that would require a PENDOT, um, approval for the saver there. Um, the access road entrance has been designed, uh, with appropriate rate, turning radius
Okay.
Uh, to allow trucks to make that turn without, you know, dragging off on the, the side of the road.
Well, that's kind of my second part of that question is, if they are, if they don't have a proper way to turn to the right, will they have to swing into the passing lane at all to turn in?
No.
And then secondarily to that, when they're entering the 51 headed north again, will they have to swing into the passing lane at all to re-enter 51?
No, they will not, and, now, the geometry that we use is the same geometry we would use on a typical two lane road with traffic going opposite directions, uh, which, which they're not permitted to, to swing out into the, the opposite lane area through, so we, we utilize the same geometry here to ensure that they stay in the right hand lane, but turning in and turning out.
All right, thank you, last part of my question has to do with, um, a visual from coming down that hill. It's pretty, uh, pretty far, you have a pretty decent visual coming, I'm gonna guess it's 200, 250 yards. Will there be any lighting or signage that will say truck crossing or here comes a truck?
So in accordance with the PENDOT driveway requirements, there would be signage, uh, for approaching vehicles, letting them know that there are trucks entering the highway.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a question, what is, as far as your HOE is concerned, what is the minimum sight distance required as they look for appropriate traffic, and then what is your sight distance in your HOE?
So, I, I do not recall the exact numbers offhand, I know that we have seen, uh, the PENDOT requirements, now, but I, I do not, I do not have the exact numbers. If, we can get those for you, though. Now, and again, PENDOT, uh, won't approve a driveway that doesn't have appropriate sight distance.
Okay, Ms. Hearn.
I might take Scott's way of doing things perhaps. Okay, first of all, I'd just like to say, at the PEND meeting, uh, you made a, uh, presentation.
Correct.
And, uh, after the presentation, there were no questions allowed by the residents, the people in the audience, is that correct? I'm just doing this generally to start. If you have W, you know.
Uh, I, I believe, um, at least one meeting, there, there were questions asked, um, following the, the presentation.
But at the second, when, when the vote was taken, the answer is no.
Uh, to my knowledge, it, there were not additional questions.
Okay, many of these questions could have been asked at that time, I, I think that's what I'm trying to get to, sorry. Uh, you filed a joint, uh, permit application for the Hercules well pad and the Hercules pipeline and interconnect, that's correct?
Uh, we filed it for the Hercules well pad, uh, did not include the interconnect segment with the joint permit.
Okay, uh, in section 682 of our zoning and oil and gas drilling, uh, operations, I do not see a definition for interconnect. Can you point to the definition of interconnect in township ordinance?
I think that is, we'll stipulate the word interconnect specifically is not mentioned in the township.
Uh, do you know the definition for interconnect?
Maybe I can make this natural. I mean, I'll, yeah, we're, we're gonna have a witness.
I'll overrun the objection, if you know, if you don't know, I don't know is a sufficient answer, also, I don't, I don't know. I, I, I think another witness can explain the function of the interconnect facility.
Okay, uh, I see a definition for the natural gas processing plant on page two. Um, could that be a definition for the interconnect?
Uh, no, this will not be a natural gas processing plant as defined in the ordinance.
As defined?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, who would go back to distances, uh, at the, um, presentation, I had trouble seeing what they were during what you said at your presentation, for the distances, uh, the well pad from this, I'll, I'll ask the questions. I guess I don't have to see if you, um, if you, you know.
Uh, and are there specific distances you are looking for?
Yes, I'm going to ask you. Uh, what's the distance from the edge of the well pad to the high school property line?
Uh, so from the well pad to the property line is 1,730 feet.
That's to the property line, not the school?
Correct.
1,700 and?
Uh, 30.
30 feet, okay, um, just for myself, uh, 1,500 feet equals 500 yards, which equals one and one-fourth lap around the high school track stadium, does this sound correct?
Uh, I'm not sure what the distance around the high school track is.
In general, okay. So it's one and quarter laps away, the edge of the well pad to the property line is generally about the same as one and a quarter times around high school track?
Again, I, I don't know what the distance around the high school track is, now, I, I can see, again, the, from the edge of well pad to the property line.
Is 1,730, thank you. Um, what is the distance from the edge of the well pad to the interconnect gas processing plant?
Uh, it's actually not a process.
Okay, I'll take that home. So what's the distance from edge of the well pad to the interconnect? So what's the distance from edge of the well pad to the interconnect?
I don't want to, wait, I'm just, all these questions were asked and answered last week.
But I wanted to ask them because I want to tie it up at the end like Christopher Long did in his two-hour presentation on air emissions. I am going somewhere with this.
I'll overrule the objection for now, Ms. Hearn.
Thank you. What's the distance from the edge of the well pad to the interconnect?
I would say it's more over 100 feet approximately.
100 feet, thank you. What is the distance from the edge of the interconnect to the high school property line?
So that distance is approximately 1,430 feet.
Thank you. What's the distance from the interconnect plant to the TAP? TAP, T-A-P. I said interconnect.
Yeah. I believe it's roughly 50 to 75 feet approximately.
What is the distance from the edge of the interconnect to the three gas transmission lines?
Are you referring to the existing Equitrans railway?
Well, there are three pipelines within that railway. What is the distance to the closest pipeline, most distance, and which line is the Equitrans?
I believe the Equitrans line is closest to the Herakles interconnect site. Again, it would be the same distance as we just discussed in the previous question.
So closest is the Equitrans?
I believe so, yes.
What is the distance of the Equitrans transmission pipeline to the high school building?
That I don't know.
Do you know the diameter of the Equitrans transmission line?
I don't specifically, I know another witness does have that information.
Okay, another witness. Do you know who that would be?
That would be Jeremy.
Do you know what direction, these are probably all for Jeremy, but I will ask him, tell me that. Do you know what direction the gas is flowing in the Equitrans transmission pipeline?
Again, any feeling with the interconnect? We have no.
Yeah, I don't think.
So we have a completely different?
Yeah, I don't think Mr. Daley has the.
Mr. Daley is correct.
Yeah.
But you did sign the erosion and sedimentation. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you don't know what the pressure is in the transmission line? The drawings presented in your application show the pipeline ends at the property line. Can you show the path of the Equitrans transmission pipeline through this township? Was that clear?
I assume dealing with the transmission line and the interconnect, you have a witness.
Ms. Hearn, if you have anything on there, you're going to stipulate.
Well, I came tonight, I didn't realize that that was the way.
I understand. I'm just, I didn't either, I'm just telling you what they're saying. Anything on the interconnect that you have, you'll have another witness, so.
Everything on the interconnect.
Anything on the interconnect, they're going to have somebody put up, yep.
Well, this is not about the interconnect, it's about the pipelines. Is that okay? Nearby, there's an enterprise product pipeline. Were there any substances going into that pipeline?
So I'm not sure what your.
Okay. Last one for this. What is the distance from the limit of disturbance to the high school property line? Now, limit of disturbance, you have in both the erosion, the erosion plan for the interconnect and well pad. So what is the distance from the, closest distance from the limit of disturbance to the property line?
I don't have the exact distance as well, thank you.
In the erosion, sedimentation applications in DEP, the limit of disturbance for dirt and dust was 27 acres. Okay, during construction, will there be a bulldozer diesel on this property?
I would assume there'll be a bulldozer during construction, yes.
And will there be a grader diesel?
I would assume there'd be a variety of types of construction equipment on this project.
Will there be water trucks?
Yes, we have a witness who testified about the operation issues with the well pad and with the interconnect, so. And Mr. Daley's testimony, we will cite civil layout issues.
Well, this is site, isn't it? Is this on site issue? What's going to occur on the site?
What is your?
I'm getting to the point that there's going to be dirt and dust and do they have an enhanced dust control program?
We have other witnesses who can testify.
So signed by Ryan Daley, you can't ask about the high, I can't ask about the high Herakles pipeline or interconnect time. Is that correct?
If you're referring to the location of it, I can answer to it. If you're referring to the function and operation of it, somebody else can speak to that.
So the earth disturbance would have to be 200 feet, 15 feet wide, that's okay, I'll come back with another witness. Once again, hot gear in, I currently, in the back. Was the interconnect built on gathering pipeline carrying gas from McCall to this well pad and Blaha Apollo B well pad to the Dominion transmission line?
I didn't even understand.
He had slowed down, he had slowed down, slowed down a quarter, quarter.
Was the interconnect built on the gathering pipeline, carrying gas from the McCall, parentheses, Plutus, and Blaha Apollo B well pad to Dominion transmission line?
Are you asking about this interconnect?
Was there any interconnect?
Yeah, that's beyond Mr. Daley's direct.
Yeah, I'm going to agree.
Mr. Daley, did you think Apollo or the Plutus?
Beyond is correct testimony.
Yeah, Ms. Hearn, just, yeah, sustained.
Is there a difference in the quality of the gas from the Plutus and Apollo wells? You don't know?
Beyond is correct testimony, others can answer that.
Thank you. You can tell me if this is beyond your scope.
Okay.
Okay. In memorandum between Huntley and Huntley in Lombardo, this oil and gas coal bed methane lease signed on April 23, 2013 by Keith Manchin. The county D book is 7718, page 195, parcel 1573G174. Was methane release included in the Blaha and McCall leases?
I have the objection beyond his.
What is coal bed methane release?
Anyway, I don't have the answer there.
I'd like to ask some questions now about, on the well pad. What type of equipment? How many wellheads are approved for the well pad?
So, so we submitted, for the Herakles well pad, we submitted six permit applications to the DEP.
How many are respected in the future?
That I can. Correct.
Do you have plans for P launchers?
Again, this is an operational issue that's more appropriately directed than other witnesses.
And who would that witness be?
That operations person. Hopefully, here needs some help.
So not P receivers, how many, where would they be located?
Yeah, I think Mr. Daley's testimony was just site, I think all these technical aspects, there's going to be other people, I believe, testifying to that concern.
Well, you have a compressor station.
I think the witness is.
How often has Olympus Energy cited a gas processing plant 1,700 feet from the well pad? Oh, I'm sorry, I should have said interconnect. How often has Olympus Energy cited a interconnect? So many feet from the well pad.
I'll tell you. Yeah, Mr. Daley.
Well, this is citing, these are things.
He worked for Olympus?
No, I'm one of their constituents.
You can ask him how many he's done for Olympus, he's a separate.
How many, how many have you, how many interconnects have you cited from a well pad for Olympus?
I believe we have three sites that they have in operation that CEC has designed, permitted, and this will be the fourth one that we have currently proposed.
Are you able to tell us where those are?
So.
Again, this is getting a little far. I'd love to do this site.
Ms. Hearn, have response to that? Where are you getting at with that? Do you want to see the design of them, or what are you, where are you trying to get to? I can maybe help you if I can, but where, you got to lay out where you want to go.
Well, when I come to, I'm going to question someone for people about emergency management and once again, dust control, things like noise. I have many other questions, I'd like to get these things, first, people in the audience, I don't know why they call me that.
These are all operational issues that, A, the assessor family did not testify to, would be in large part other witnesses as well.
Right, so he's on site, like site layout, so anybody that's technical aspect, they'll have somebody else.
So would not be in your reference, what is the closest distance Olympus Energy has cited a well pad or you have cited a well pad from the school district property?
I would say, to my knowledge, this is probably the closest, but again, we're well within the requirements of the ordinance.
How often has, have you, for Olympus, cited a well pad near three transmission lines?
I mean, it's very frequent that well development occurs near existing infrastructure because that reduces the amount of additional pipelines that are required to get the gas to market.
On your general information form from Olympus Energy which you signed, on page three, question number eight, number three, have you addressed community concerns that were identified? And you said NA. What does NA mean?
Can you point to what's on?
Sure. General information form. Authorization application, February 21, 2022, on our website.
You said that was on page three, is that correct?
Page three.
And which question?
Number, question number three. Have you addressed community concerns that were identified?
So again, that goes back to the county and municipal notifications. So we responded NA because we, at that time, we had not received any community concerns. So there were none to address at that point when we submitted the DEP application.
Might you have brought these questions or concerns from? That was when you submitted the application for the ordinance, and that's when, I think, it was received by the people in the office here. So when would you have received questions? If we didn't know about the well pad or the interconnect or the pipelines?
Again, this relates to my department application.
Ms. Hearn?
I guess I'll have to accept that for now. On page four, same document. Is there a coal mining project? Then the answer was no. Could you explain?
You're referring to question number one and about the middle of the page?
Page four, question number one, yes.
So again, there is an incidental coal extraction permit review. By way of the term incidental, that refers to the activity is actually separate from coal mining operation, or is extracted the coal as part of that primary operation. So in terms of this document, this would not be concerned a coal mining project.
And you just submitted that recently? The review for the coal?
We submitted the incidental coal extraction permit several months ago, I don't recall major date timeframe.
Okay, not back in February when the other things were submitted?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a reason it took so long to submit that?
None in particular.
It wasn't a surprise that there's coal in that area?
No, I mean, when we did the geotechnical investigation, we identified the coal in the borays.
Probably for another person, then, page six, number 13. And you can tell me who. Will the project involve operations that produce air emissions? Your answer is no.
Again, this is separate DEP permit and beyond the relevance of this testimony, so again, that.
I'm going to sustain that, sorry. It is the same issue we had with Mr. Taylor, so again, it's relevant.
Referring back to construction activities, hours of operation. In the ordinance, no construction activities performed in connection with oil and gas operations except for assembly and disassembly of joint groups shall be performed except between hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. or as otherwise authorized by the township. How will you meet this standard?
I mean, I think somebody else can speak to the specifics, but as far as construction is concerned, Olympus would adhere to those requirements.
Except between 7:00 and 9:00. Do you know the hours of the school day for the senior high school?
I do not.
Okay. Did you ever look to see if this could, you can comply with 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. the construction activities?
I do not have that information.
These restrictions on hours set within A and B above shall apply to all truck traffic accessing and the oil and gas operations. Uh, how have you planned for this during the hours of seven A M to seven P M when coal is in session?
Yeah, thanks, sir, oh, we're, again, we're, just so you know, sir, I knew you were pre-pressing. I'm not playing you, I'm just saying, just try and focus, like, operational stuff, they'll have, they'll have witnesses on site and stuff is for Mr. Daly.
And glaring, I think, is for Mr. Miller. I'm done.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Uh, Cindy Schmidt? Cindy Schmidt? One six four one Scenery Drive? Four months, okay. Um, Eric Catcher?
He had to leave.
Okay. Uh, Sandy Stefan?
That's me, and I have no questions for the witness.
Okay. Uh, Joel Whitman?
All right, I'm just going to apologize, I have more time following some of the questions of the objectors before me, so if any of them are repeated, I'm gonna try my best. Okay. Are you being presented today as an expert witness?
Uh, yeah, I said, no. Uh, no.
Were you in charge of ensuring that this application complies with the Elizabeth Township zoning code?
Uh, yes, in, in coordination with the rest of the, of the applicant team.
You testified that the applicant would comply with the Elizabeth Township zoning code. Uh, what was that testimony based on?
Uh, the requirements of the oil and gas section of the zoning code.
Have there been any changes or updates to this application from the time of original application and presentation before the planning commission and until now?
Uh, not that hard.
Okay. Can you tell me how many well pads Olympus operates in Pennsylvania?
Uh, I don't have that number.
Could you estimate?
Yeah.
Can you tell me who can answer that?
Olympus personnel.
Thanks. For this particular application, can you tell me which sections of the zoning code you use to base this application off of?
Uh, again, it was in reference to, uh, the general requirements for a conditional use application and, uh, the, uh, specific. The specific use of the oil and gas ordinance.
Um, did C E C and Olympus have a pre-permit conference prior to applying for conditional use?
Objection. That was asked in answer.
Oh, he said, sorry, I have more time to follow. Um, were you present at the meeting?
Yes.
Um, in this meeting, did you discuss which portions of the ordinance would need to be followed?
Yeah, objection is, uh, communication with D E P. No, I think she's talking about the pre.
Pre-permit.
Yeah, yeah, with, yeah. She's talking about the pre. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Uh, I, I don't recall, uh, discussing every single ordinance department, uh, we talked, um, general site location and, and setback departments.
Okay, thanks. Um, can you tell me, uh, who instructed you that the sections of the ordinance you followed were the only sections of the zoning ordinance that require proof of compliance?
Uh, to my knowledge, it was not specifically directed.
Okay, um, to your knowledge, did the majority members of the board of commissioners agree with the sections that, um, were necessary?
Okay, yeah, that, that wasn't, did you say commissioners?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, that wasn't the testimony, yeah, it wasn't just the testimony, they're warranted, they won't make you testify or kind of, sure.
Correct.
Okay. Um, can you show me in your application where you address fire protection?
Uh, no, offhand, I, I can't point to a specific location.
Okay. Um, can you show me in your application where you address electrical disturbances?
Uh, again, I, I personally can't point to that directly.
Um, would you be the person who's responsible to address this?
I, I would guess no, it sounds like it's more operational related.
Can you tell me who that would be?
Yeah, it'll be a representative from Olympus.
Okay, we don't have a name?
We'll have a representative first.
Thanks. Um, can you show me in your application or, application where you address vibrations?
Uh, again, I, I can't point to that specifically.
Would you be the person who's responsible to address vibrations?
Uh, no.
Okay. And I guess you can't tell me who that is?
Uh, again, it'd be a representative from Olympus.
Okay. Um, can you show me in your application where you address odors?
Uh, again, that, that's an operational question for Olympus.
Can you show me in your application where you address smoke?
Uh, again, I, I believe that's an operational question.
Okay. Um, I'm assuming the next one's an applica-, uh, operational, do you, where you, can you show me your application where you address ash dust or fumes?
Uh, again, that is a same deal, operational.
Okay. Um, can you show me in your application where you address gases that may be emitted from the site?
That's an operational question.
Would glare be operational?
Uh, glare in terms of what lighting on the, the pad site?
Can you show me in your application where you address glare?
Um, so, again, I think we address glare by indicating that lighting on the pad is, is temporary in nature, um, on the well pad itself. Lights would be pointed inward and downward. Um, given the vicinity of the site, the distance away from protective structure, the property lines, we don't anticipate that, that glare's gonna be an issue.
Were you the person responsible for creating the lighting plan?
Uh, a, a lighting plan is often prepared specific to the site.
Okay. Um, noise questions, the operational?
Uh, we, we have another witness specific for noise questions.
Okay. Sorry, I have to find my spot, 'cause I think some of these are not for you. Um, I'm moving on to like another section of questioning, you want me to keep going? Okay, I didn't know, like, I'm setting it for cut off time, okay. Okay. Um, can you tell me about the plans for landscaping?
Uh, we, we do not have any additional landscaping proposed at this site.
Okay. Um, can you tell me if tree removal will need to be done?
Uh, yes, there will be tree removal, um, to construct a well pad and access road.
Can you tell me what will be done with these trees once they're removed from the property?
Uh, I think a lot is based on, um, land management agreements and, and, um, Olympus's operations.
Okay. Um, can you tell me how high the fencing will be on the site?
Uh, so Olympus's typical fence is six foot high with, uh, pre-transport wire on the top.
And can you tell me how high the sound wall buffers will be?
Uh, again, we have somebody else to testify on, uh, specifics of the, the sound walls and the sound study.
Okay. Um, is there a staging area for truck traffic proposed for this project?
That's an operational question. I actually think it was asked and answered too.
Okay, follow it, I'm sorry. Was it yes, was it no?
I think it was no, I thought he said testified no, there wasn't, I didn't mean to stage you.
Yeah, if, if it's, if it's in relation to staging or stacking trucks on Route fifty one, um, no, we're not, we're not doing that.
Okay. Um, did you design the access road?
Yes.
Are there pull-off areas along the access road?
Uh, yes, there are pull-off areas.
Okay. Um, how wide is your access road to the well pad, I think you might have said this?
Uh, it's generally twenty-four feet wide.
Okay. Um. And how wide is your access road to the interconnect, you might have said that too?
Uh, I believe, let's real quick. Uh, so that access road would be fifteen feet wide.
Okay, thanks. Um, in the event of an emergency, um, is fifteen feet enough room for emergency vehicles to get around truck traffic if necessary?
Uh, yes, and I, I would say you're, you're likely not gonna have a situation where you would have, um, two directional traffic with trucks and emergency vehicles.
Are you aware that the width, uh, the average width of a fire truck can be from eight and a half feet to ten feet wide?
Yes.
Are you aware that the average width of an ambulance is eight foot wide?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, how wide are the trucks that will be accessing the site?
Uh, again, I, I would say they're roughly eight to ten feet wide.
Okay. So can you say for certain that the width of the access road, um, as designed without pull-off areas is sufficient in the event of an emergency?
Uh, yeah, with specified the width of pull-off areas.
What?
Do you want to rephrase?
He said no.
No, he said there was pull-offs, yeah.
Oh. Yeah, on the access road.
Mm-hmm.
But what about to the?
You want to rephrase?
What should I say exactly? What about, so, so my original question was, can you say for certain that the width of the access road as, as designed without pull-off areas is sufficient in the event of emergency? You're saying there are pull-off areas?
Along the well pad access road, yes, there are pull-off areas.
What about to the interconnect?
Uh, there are no pull-off areas, um, along that short access road.
Okay. Um, I'm moving on to another, okay. Um. In addition to your role in ensuring this application complies with local ordinances, is it also your responsibility to design the erosion and sedimentation control plans and ensure they comply with D E P's best management practices?
Yes.
Okay. Um. All right, I would, um, like to submit evidence for my next question, okay? Um, I would like to submit as evidence Title Whitman one, the violation history pulled from the D E P Greenport site that lists Olympus Energy violations from twenty eighteen to present.
Objection, this is beyond the scope of any direct. Yeah, you're gonna get, whenever you testify, you'll have an opportunity to, but he hasn't testified as to.
It's, it's.
Undirect.
Joel.
You'll have that opportunity though.
Joel, it's directly related.
Okay, um, can I, I don't know if I'm gonna, right, I, the violation history is relevant and this was decided in the recent Westier Township versus Olympus Energy case that is yet to be appealed.
Yeah, they don't, that, you will, you'll, you'll get there, it's just not part of his testimony, his direct testimony, so yeah, you, you'll have an opportunity to either present your own witness. You'll, you're gonna have an opportunity to put all that in, unfamiliar with this case, you can use the case, but it's just, it's beyond what he testified.
And if we don't know who this guy is, we don't.
Yeah, you'll get your own opportunity. We're not acknowledging that, no, we're just, but, but. I wouldn't think you would, certainly. But, uh, we certainly concur that it's, it's certainly not within, uh, the direct, yeah, sort of deal, yeah, it's just outside of direct, so you'll have an opportunity, it's just outside of direct.
No.
Okay, thanks. Um, some of these, you're gonna have to tell me if this isn't the right, I have no idea, now at this point. Um, going through a list of the E P violations for Olympus Energy.
Same objection, yeah.
No, let her get to the point.
You can ask the question, but I think it's the same.
Yeah, okay. Um. Uh, energy from twenty eighteen to present, I was able to see ninety-four violations.
Uh, objection, this is.
I have a question, he said I can ask it.
I'll, I'll hear the question. Yeah, I'm not asking the question.
No, she's asking a question.
If the question involves the violation history, that is going to be beyond the scope of his direct, so that, that is.
Has to do with the design in relation to violations, now he designs the sites.
Okay.
So if I have a question about a violation on the design side, it would not be him?
Would be him.
Is that?
It would be.
Mr. Lucas is?
Yes.
Yeah, it's beyond scope.
It is him, it is him.
Is he the witness for a design issue that I guess asked the question?
Yes, he just testified that.
Uh, yeah, the audience, please, yeah. Mr. Lucas, is he?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, maybe I have to hear the question, I just, I don't know what the question is to be able to say whether he's the right witness or not, whether it's beyond the scope, so if I have to hear the question. If it's certainly related to their violations or what are these violations about, that's a no, but if there's a design issue he testified to, then, uh, you're not, go ahead and ask the question.
Until I ask, I, I can't get an answer. Um, I'll start from the beginning. Going through a list of D E P violations for Olympus Energy from twenty eighteen to present, I was able to see ninety-four violations for person failed to design, implement, and maintain erosion and sedimentation best management practices. Fifty-six of which were located in Eliza-, in Elizabeth Township between the Apollo V and Flute's well sites. Would you say those violations were a result of your design?
Uh, no.
Okay. So would you say the violations were a failure of implementation and maintaining those best management practices?
Uh, uh, again, I don't like the specifics on the violations. Yeah, I, I don't know the specifics of, of all violations there.
Yeah, and if we could be clear on this, the difference between a notice of violation and a finding of violation.
Last one.
I think the violation issue, I think the violation issue in itself is gonna get, come in later, but it's beyond the scope of this test, his direct testimony.
It is.
The question about was, does he feel there were design issues, I think is a fair question, well, she did ask. So, and he answered, right, so I think that's where I'm at with it, so I'm, so if you have another question, I'll address it that way, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it makes sense, yeah, um.
Like, if you, if you're trying to show that he doesn't know how to design properly, that's one, but if it's about violations, then that's another thing.
So, so he said no to my last question, um, and so I'm just a bit confused, um, because if there were fifty-six reported failures identified.
Shouldn't, but it weren't fifty-six. A failure does not equal a notice of violation, does not equal a violation.
How about two with consent orders?
So, uh, yeah, so, I'm just saying, just rephrase it, I know, yeah, go ahead and rephrase it. Yeah, so I, I think, maybe what this question was asking is, um, can you explain the difference? Can you explain those?
Well, I was, what I'm asking is, yeah, if there's.
Why is your answer no?
If there's failures of design, um, if they're identified as failures of design by, from an implementation or maintenance, it would have to be a failure on one of those areas, correct? If that's what's identified as.
Again, I, I think the notation of, um, federal design, maintenance, or implementation is a, uh, general bubble that the D E P can select when they perform an inspection. Uh, I don't, I don't think it necessarily is inclusive of all of those items.
In your area is design, which you just testified was not the area of failure, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So which of the other two would resolve a failure?
Again, I think the witness testified in thought specifically failure would be, notice of violation that, uh, Whitman was asking about, so.
Right, and with, with all due respect, Mr. Daly is testifying to the ability of Olympus to adhere to our ordinances, a provision of which is to comply with all state and federal laws. Violation history is relevant to the history of compliance and probability of future compliance. My line of questioning is directly related to where failures have happened in Elizabeth Township and identifying where those failures exist.
Yeah, and that's a, those are, that's a good point, but again, you're getting into the violation and away from the design, so I think you're talking about the violation history and all that, you'll have an opportunity, you can get that as.
I understand.
That is what you have, but I think on this, you're, you have to limit it to his design and whether his designs are faulty or his designs in general. He's, the testimony I believe we have right now from Mr. Daly is, his designs are not faulty, and the answer was no. You said there was a violation, is it because of your design? He said no.
Okay.
I think that's where we're at right now, so if you.
And I ask all that other stuff, it's somebody else.
You, either that or on your own, on your own presentation.
Well, can you tell me which? Well, can you tell me which well pad is in Elizabeth Township you designed?
Uh, so C E C designed both the Apollo and the Plutus well pad. Um, there were various engineers, uh, including myself on both of those projects.
Okay. Um, are you also responsible for filling out and submitting, uh, state level permitting?
Uh, as far as the E S C G Ps are concerned, yes.
Okay.
The E S C G P one.
Uh, you testified that, uh, this will require the removal of coal, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Um, and you just said this, does this require specialized permit from the D E P?
It requires an additional permit from D E P, yes.
Can you tell me what that permit is?
I think this question that they asked me answered the second question.
I could not follow this question.
Well, that's, you know, the, the
Can he answer it?
Well, I already did answer.
But to me, can he answer it to me?
No, well, I'm objecting to having these objectors repeat the same questions over and over again, this is an obvious calling tactic that the, the process examination
Maybe you should present it better.
Three to four full water in the higher bracket.
Okay, audience, and we're creating a record here, so please, um, the issue is, and what else, what happened with the other, with other, um, parties is we're not gonna get into the state permitting questions and those types of issues, those are outside of our jurisdiction, so if you might ask your question, again, I'm gonna limit, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sustain an objection dealing with the state permitting issues. We have to limit this to the township's jurisdiction and what we can do there.
Okay. So you still, so I can't ask them what that permit is?
You can ask whatever you want, I'm saying, if he's, if he objects, um, the testimony
We're gonna go with him.
Outside this, dealing with the state D E P permitting issue, we can't, we don't control that, it's outside of our jurisdiction, so it's not really relevant.
Okay.
Plus, it's been asked and answered, we did, I let, I let the first two, I let the first two parties really go into it to a point.
Okay, um, well, yes, I'd like to tell me. Is needed for this, uh, permit based on the amount of coal that we need to be removed?
Uh, it's based on the quality of the coal and the quantity, yes.
Okay. Can you tell me if you submitted that D E P application with your conditional use materials at the time of application?
Uh, that, that was not submitted with the, uh, application materials, uh, I believe because it hadn't yet been filed with the, the D E P.
Okay.
It had not been filed.
Um, can you tell me what the date of submission to the D E P was for the mining permit?
I, I do not recall that date.
Do you recall if it was May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two?
It very well could have been.
Okay, um, so did you not provide that application with your materials here at the time of application on May third, twenty twenty-two?
I think we've included this already.
Anybody remember that answer?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with objection, yeah.
Thanks.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure, um, did you not provide that application with your materials here at the township at the time of application on May third, twenty twenty-two?
Uh, we did not include that, uh, because it had not been filed with D E P yet.
Okay, um, have you received a technical deficiency letter on that application from the D E P?
Uh, we received, I believe, an administrative, uh, deficiency letter from the D E P.
Okay. Um, the E S C G P, would that not be him?
I think it's him, he already testified to a lot of this, so go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know if my questions are repetitive, because I have a hard time. Do you still require E S C G P three?
Uh, so specific to the well pad, uh, again, as I testified previously, it'll be an individual erosion and sediment control permit. Uh, the pipeline interconnect project has, will have E S C G P.
Okay, thanks, um, have you applied for that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Um, have you included that in your application materials submitted to the board?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Would you say that this is more coal than typically encountered during normal operations?
Uh, what sort of operations, do normal operations do you refer to?
Um, well, pad operations.
Uh, I mean, it, it's commonplace, uh, as far as any construction development in southwest Pennsylvania to encounter coal, um, yeah.
Okay, have you ever encountered this amount of coal at either of the other sites in Elizabeth Township?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Um, are you in charge of the plan for removing the coal from the property?
Also, Olympus will, uh, implement the, the plan, um, C E C in coordination with the D, D E P will, uh, develop a, a plan, um, as part of the permit.
Okay. Do you know who will be removing the coal?
Uh, permit approval process.
Do you know who will, who will be removing the coal from the property?
Uh, that I don't know, it would be somebody contracted, uh, through Olympus.
Um, do you know what the plan for the coal is once it's removed?
Uh, no.
Okay. And no interconnect questions, are you?
Uh, as far as operation of the site, no.
I don't know that.
Uh, if you're speaking location of the site, I can speak to that.
Okay, are you the person who's responsible for designing the interconnect pad?
Uh, as far as the site design, creating storm art controls, yes.
Okay, um, then are you also the person who asks specific questions about the operation of equipment on the interconnect pad?
No.
Okay. Uh, can you tell me who is?
Uh, again, it'll be somebody called, uh, Hyperion Representative.
Okay, thank you. Are you the person to address questions about water withdrawal?
Uh, no, that'd be a Olympus representative.
Okay, um, are you planning, oh, sorry, hold on. Um, according to the application, uh, as of January fifth, twenty twenty-two, the only D E P approved water sources in Elizabeth Township are the Glean, the Glean Water Intake Facility and the P A American Water Hole on Simpson Hall Road. I, I just want to ask him if he's applied to update that plan.
As far as the water management plan is concerned?
Yeah.
Uh, again, Olympus, uh, can speak to the current status of the water management plan.
So I can ask them why they haven't done that yet?
Sure.
Okay, which is not you.
Correct.
Okay, um, so to summarize, you testified that you were not responsible for preparing, preparing plans that addressed lighting, fire protection, vibrations, emissions, or coal removal plans, but there are applications that have been sent into the D E P that were not included as part of the original May third submission for conditional use, yet you are testifying that Olympus Energy will comply with all ordinance requirements, is that correct?
Yes, we, Olympus will have to comply with requirements of the ordinance. Now, as far as the, your reference of the permits that have been submitted since the initial use application was submitted, I, I would agree that, yes, we did submit the incidental coal extraction permit to the D E P after this application was filed, so it was not included in the original, so.
Okay, um, that's all I have for you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nine fifty-nine.
One, two, three, four people left.
Well, let's safety.
You want to grab up to the floor?
I'll finish this one a little bit.
I'd like to finish this one.
Okay, let's grind a little bit.
I just have a question while you're, while you're moving to the next witness. Have you determined if Elizabeth Township has a main sanitary line parallel in fifty-one at the area of your, oh, I'm sorry. Kyle Boss again, have you been able to determine if Elizabeth Township has a main sanitary line paralleling fifty-one at the access, on your access road? I believe there is one, and you could find that answer pretty, pretty easy.
Uh, to my knowledge, we did not look at any sanitary lines when, when we surveyed the access road entrance. Uh, we can certainly contact the sanitary authority about that.
Yes, please do, and then along with that, find out what type of material, because I believe that was built quite a while ago, as in the southeast or eighties, and it very well could be terra-clot, either ore, velvet concrete, and if so, uh, you, you guys might want to think about putting plastic or PVC in there, so it's not crushing the thing.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Charles, uh, Salio. Charles. Karen Lynn. Karen Lynn. Amy Turza. The last of them, please, Eric Piper.
Don't worry, I don't have a lot of questions, I'm just a dad. Um, I, I hope you can answer some of these, I'm trying to go off your testimony, you're going off the track rounds. Um, do you or does your subcontractor have GPS in your trucks?
Uh, that would be an operational question for Olympus.
Uh, I guess what prevents a driver from making a turn? So you said that they come off of the access road, they make a right, because it's a divided highway, they have to head north on fifty-one.
Correct.
What prevents a driver from making a turn? They say, hey, I want to get home early, I want to turn on Wiggles and I'm gonna come up here on forty-eight, you gotta, what prevents them from doing that?
Uh, again, one of Olympus' operational people can address that.
Okay. And you, how do you ensure your drivers stay on the approved routes?
Uh, same deal.
How do you, how do they ensure their drivers stay on the approved routes?
Again, somebody from Olympus can answer that operational question.
So you testified earlier that this is probably like the third interconnect that you, your organization has put together for Olympus?
Yes, I would say there, there's three or four in operation that, that we've worked on.
Okay, so how many, like, well sites have you kind of designed, a lot, right?
Uh, me personally?
Yeah.
C E C, me personally.
Yeah, see, you personally.
Yeah, I, I've worked, um, you know, with the team of engineers, um, likely over, over fifty well pads, I would say.
Okay, and three of them had the interconnects attached to it.
Uh, so typically, an interconnect facility can service multiple well pads, and, so they don't, it's not necessarily all one-to-one.
I, I'm just saying, like, an interconnect right next to a well site, like, how many of those?
I mean, I can think of, uh, two specifically that are in close proximity to the well site.
Okay, so I, I guess my question is, what additional risks are there when placing an interconnect right next to a well site?
Uh, I mean, it's, from a site development standpoint, I don't see any risk, um, I think operationally, somebody from Olympus can speak to that.
Can you go into it a little bit further?
Sure.
Okay. So you put together the application, explain it to me, because I don't know what I'm talking about, but I read the ordinance, and it says fifteen hundred feet from a school property line, but the interconnect is fourteen hundred thirty from the property line.
So the ordinance, uh, as far as the fifteen hundred foot setback is concerned, is specific to a well pad, um, that is the site where, uh, wells will be drilled. Um, the interconnect site falls under the general oil and gas operations definition, uh, which does not have a fifteen hundred foot setback from a property line.
All right, so you're saying the fifteen only applies to well sites?
Correct, it applies to the well pad.
Just to well sites, is what you're saying to me, though, right now?
Yes, according to the ordinance, correct.
Okay. So the, my last question is, you testified, Commissioner Campus asked you a question about moving this back, and you said it wasn't feasible. Are you saying that you physically can't do it, or it's just economically not feasible to do it?
Um, I, I mean, I would say it's, it's not feasible, um, you know, there, there are certain
So you physically can't do it? Anywhere else except right there?
I mean, I, I, I would say it's not feasible to relocate this well site on this property from where we have it proposed, and still
But you're not answering my question, you can't, you're saying you can't put this well site in interconnect any further back, it's not physically possible? Like, you can't design it?
Not, and still meet the setback requirements, all, all the setback requirements.
So if you moved it back a thousand feet, that wasn't your testimony, your testimony was, it wasn't feasible. If you moved it a thousand, there were certain grading requirements associated, it had nothing to do with setbacks?
Well, correct, what I was testifying to is the available locations on the site that would meet the setback requirements are not feasible to construct a well pad in.
So you can't physically alter them, like, you're gonna go, you're gonna alter this, right? You're not gonna just build it right there, you're gonna, you're gonna do bulldozers and everything, right? Correct. So you can't, you're, you're saying you can't manipulate another piece of land that's further back? You can't physically do it, it's not possible? Or is it just cheaper to put it closer to the school?
I would say without, um, further, uh, significant geotechnical investigation, it is not feasible.
So you physically can't do it?
I, I'm saying it's not feasible.
Just say, just say whether you can do it or not, can, can somebody come in and put this well pad a thousand feet back?
A thousand feet back, further from
The school! I mean, it's not a hard question.
They can't physically move it that far?
Uh, we are off the record right now, I'll let that, hopefully get set up. All right, so all these light gray lines, yeah, we're back on, sorry, sorry. All these light gray lines that are shown on this map represent, uh, topographic contours, which represent the elevation of the land. The closer the lines are together, the steeper the existing grade is. So you look at an area like this, where the lines are further apart, that represents, uh, it's a flatter area. You can see beneath the well pad, uh, the tardany contour lines, which is a flat area. If you move to the west, you can see how close together, uh, these contour lines get. Um, as far as slope stability is concerned, when you're cutting and grading a flat well pad, uh, generally, try to meet, uh, two to one, um, fill slope and cut slope. With these existing grades, if you were to flatten an area the size of this well pad, those existing fills and cuts, uh, would start what we call chase down the slope, because of how steep the existing grade is. So as I mentioned, the only other location where, uh, we could actually grade in a, a well pad on the site is on this location, and this location falls within the seven hundred and fifty foot protected structure setback of these properties along Fert'n Lane. So by virtue of that, um, and all these existing, uh, steep slopes on the site, we were limited to this location, which, again, meets all the setback requirements.
So my understanding is that, according to the variance for the ordinance that we have, that you can go within that seven fifty if you have explicit consent of the people that are there, did we explore that?
Uh, it's all my knowledge.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Lucas, any re-credit?
This hearing will be continued until September twentieth at six P M.